Good evening and welcome to the August 11th, 2025, meeting of the Menlo Park Planning Commission. I am Chair Andrew Eric, and I thank you for joining us this evening, either remotely or here in council chambers. Established by state law, our city's planning commission is composed of seven volunteer residents of Menlo Park, appointed to four-year terms by the city council. Our planning commission is not a policy-setting body; that's the city council. We are a policy-implementing body. We review development proposals for compliance with our city's general plan and zoning ordinances, which can both be found on the city's website. The commission also reviews city-initiated land-use planning projects, such as general plan updates and zoning ordinance amendments. The commission reviews development proposals requiring a use permit, architectural control, a variance, minor subdivision, as well as the environmental reviews associated with those projects. When applicable, the planning commission reviews below-market rate or BMR housing agreements associated with these applications. The commission is the final decision-making body for these applications unless appealed to the city council. The commission also serves as the recommending body to the city council for major subdivisions, rezoning, conditional development permits, zoning ordinance amendments, general plan amendments, and environmental reviews associated with those projects. If applicable, the planning commission reviews and makes recommendations on BMR agreements associated with these projects. Staff in our city's planning division are responsible for implementation of the general plan, zoning ordinances, and related policies. Staff are charged with, among other things, processing planning applications in a timely manner and proposing changes to our zoning code that could make our city more efficient and our planning processes less Byzantine. Staff is also responsible for the agenda of regular planning commission meetings and for prioritizing what and when agenda items or development applications come before the planning commission. Planning commissioners do not have any ability to place items on the agenda for these meetings. We encourage your active participation, whether you are an applicant or interested member of the public, and there will be an opportunity to speak publicly for each specific agenda item, as well as for general public comment. With that, I will call the roll. Commissioner Beruzzi.
Present.
Commissioner Doe.
Present.
Commissioner Farrick.
Here.
Commissioner Schindler.
Here.
Commissioner Sillen.
Here.
I am Chair Eric. I am also here. Vice Chair Silverstein is absent, so we have six commissioners in chambers, one absent, which is a quorum. Moving on to Section C of our agenda, reports and announcements. Ms. Sandmeyer, are there any staff reports or announcements this evening?
Yes. Good evening, Chair Eric and commissioners. There's two items on the city council agenda tomorrow night that may be of interest. One is the introduction of an ordinance for local amendments to the 2022 Building Code, and the second is an appointment of a new housing commissioner. That concludes my updates, but I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sandmeyer. Do any commissioners have any questions about those reports or announcements? Yes, Commissioner Schindler.
I was wondering if Ms. Sandmeyer could just expand on the first agenda item for the city council that you were referring to and just give us another couple of sentences of color.
Okay, yeah, those amendments, I believe, are related to the REACH codes. I don't have all the information, but the packet is, of course, available online for further information.
Okay. Do commissioners have further questions about those announcements? Okay. Do commissioners have any additional reports or announcements? Commissioner Schindler.
Thank you, Chair Eric. I had two things I just wanted to report out on. The first is a document that I took the opportunity to study, which was published by ABAG, or our Bay Area Association of Governments. This was a document that was, I think, relevant to many of the things we do here on the planning commission, because it dealt with the RENA number methodologies. So the title of the report is "Approved Final RENA Plan for the San Francisco Bay Area, 2023 to 2031," and this was updated as of June of this year. I read this document in order to better understand what goes into those RENA numbers. And this report describes who sets the RENA numbers, the timeframe for when they are set, where they were set for the sixth cycle housing elements, and specifically the methodology or the mathematical side of things. There's a ton of detail in this report, and there's a number of things that goes into the methodology, but I wanted to share the highlights with other commissioners and members of the public who are interested. The primary thing that goes into the RENA number calculations is the projected number of households that a city will have in 2050, as determined by two of the Bay Area's regional planning agencies. So in other words, more projected households, more housing requirements in your RENA number. Those baseline numbers are also adjusted by a couple of things. The first factor that adjusts the RENA numbers are how much of the city lives in a high-opportunity area. So in other words, if there are more households living in high-opportunity areas, it dials up the RENA number. The second thing that adjusts the RENA number in this methodology is proximity to jobs. There are two components of that. One of them is the number of jobs within a 30-minute drive. The second component is the number of jobs within a 45-minute transit commute. Both of those variables are for jobs that do not have to be in the city for which the RENA is being calculated. In other words, in our case, it wouldn't necessarily be dependent on jobs that are 30-minute drive in Menlo Park. It would be within a 30-minute drive or a 45-minute transit commute, anywhere in any direction. And there's tons more detail, if you are so inclined, in the report. The final adjustment in the methodology, there's an equity adjustment, which is based on an analysis of race or income in a city, comparing it to the entire region. So based on all of these things and my understanding of the report, it comes out that Menlo Park has 0.48%, so just under half a percent, of the projected population for 2050 in the Bay Area and 0.67% of the RENA housing allocation, so a little bit over half a percent. Menlo Park scored, not surprisingly, very high on high-opportunity areas compared to the average in the Bay Area. Menlo Park also scored well above average on the number of jobs within a 30-minute drive, and both of those things resulted in the RENA number being higher than that baseline of population projections. And if you guys are interested in it, it's very easy to find. It's on the ABAG website, under Tools and Resources, and then under Digital Library. And the title of the document, as I said, is "The Approved Final RENA Plan for the San Francisco Bay Area, Updated June 2025." I also had an opportunity to read another report that I will briefly describe. It was a report that was prepared for the Planning Commission of Redwood City, so our neighbors up the road. In September of 2022, the Redwood City Planning Commission held a study session on the topic of jobs-housing ratio, and I found this information while doing some online research myself. The stated purpose of that study session for Redwood City was to explore the job-housing balance, what it is, and in what contexts it could be used to inform land-use goal and policy decisions. There's a staff report. There's a presentation, so slides. There's also an FAQ document available on the website for more information. All of these were prepared by, in combination of Redwood City staff, along with the Economic and Planning Systems, Inc., which is a land economics consulting firm. And if you don't want to read all of it, I would recommend starting with the presentation and then reading the FAQs. I think they're very insightful into how our neighbors in Redwood City are thinking about the jobs-housing balance, or at least how they were that date back in September of 2022. For example, the report says that "Policy interventions designed to improve the jobs-housing balance are more effective if pursued at a regional scale, because individual jurisdictions are unlikely to have a major impact acting alone." It also tees up a question about why it's not possible for decision-makers to use jobs-housing balance as a determining factor in making a decision on a development project. And specifically says, I'll just read it here, "Jobs-housing balance should be used for informational purposes for considering longer policy goals and decisions within the city. Decision-makers can use this analysis as a reference to better understand the implications that land-use decisions have when considering future general plan zoning ordinances and precise plans, instead of being used as the basis to approve, deny, or determine the merits of an individual project." And if you're interested, I think the easiest way to find this page, which has all the resources that I referenced, is simply by searching for "Redwood City Job-Housing Ratio Study Session for September 2022." Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Schindler. Do any of my fellow commissioners have additional reports or announcements? Okay. Then we will move to Section D of our agenda, the public comment portion. Under "Public Comment," the public may address the commission on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the commission once under "Public Comment" for a limit of three minutes. You are not required to provide your name, district, or city of residence, but it is helpful. The commission cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the commission cannot respond to non-agenda items brought up under "Public Comment" other than to provide general information. Please know that if you are here tonight to comment on one of our agenda items, you will have a chance to speak when we get to that item in the agenda. So to learn how to participate, I am going to turn to our clerk this evening, Mr. Pruder, to explain how you can participate and then to begin our public comment period.
Thank you, Chair Eric, and thank you, commissioners, members of the public, Matt Pruder, Associate Planner. At this time, we have public comment for items not on the agenda, and anyone in the council chambers tonight who'd like to speak on an item not on the agenda can present me a comment card at this time, and you'll be able to speak. Also, for those who are joining us by Zoom, you're welcome to press the hand icon, and you'll be able to notify us that you'd like to speak, and we'll let you speak accordingly. And lastly, anyone who's calling by phone, anyone who's calling by phone can provide that indication as well by pressing *9. It will similarly tell us that you'd like to speak. At this time, I have two comment cards involving items not on the agenda. We could begin that process now. Members of the council chambers that would like to speak.
Please go ahead.
All right. Thank you. Our first speaker is Patty Frye. You're welcome to come up to the podium. I will set up the timer first. If you don't mind, just give me a moment, and then we'll let you begin your three minutes of speaking.
I don't think it's on. Is it on? Okay. Thank you, planning commissioners. I first want to thank you for your service. I was a planning commissioner 25 years ago, and I've kept involved in land-use projects over this time, and I appreciate the work that you put in. And that's the reason I'm here. I have looked very hard at the final EIR for the Parkline Project, which is on your agenda two weeks from now, plus a bunch of other documents. And I think it's too much for you to try to do in one session, and I encourage you to do what past commissions have done, which is to spread it over, spread those considerations over a couple of meetings. The EIR for this project, easily, especially because the project changed officially as of today. The EIR alone is at least a two-meeting topic. The other documents build upon what you learn or what comes up in that, as well as the public comment that you won't have until 5:00 that day, or even in person that day. So to really do justice to your consideration, I really encourage you to take the time. There's no reason to hurry. The development environment is pretty sluggish. The Willa Village remains, you know, not started. And I think that, you know, the staff is short, staffed right now, and with changing the project, I think it's so easy to have details get missed, and these details really matter. You're the ones who look at the details and do the critical thinking to make recommendations to the council, so I really encourage you to take more time. You would not be the first ones to ask for that. I also encourage you to ask for some of those documents, especially the development agreement, to be publicized at least a week ahead of time. Again, that's not a new thing to do. It can be done. There's no reason that you and the public should be, you know, tasked with trying to observe all of that and then make comments and good decisions in a short period of time. I do want to focus on a couple of things. It's really interesting that the RENA allocation was brought up just now, but I did notice in the final EIR that a revision was made that the additional employment related to the project was not considered in either the housing element in Menlo Park or in regional planning, ABAG specifically. So the implications of that are pretty big for the next RENA allocation. Anyway, I, again, thank you for your service and hope that you do the right thing and take your time. There's really no reason to rush and lots of reasons to focus on the details, because that's where the devil is, right? Thanks.
Thank you for your comment.
All right. Thank you for the first comment. Our second commenter, I apologize. I believe the name is Carl Gish. Thank you. You're welcome to come and speak. You also have three minutes, and you may begin at any moment. Thank you. You may want to adjust the microphone as well. Sorry. Thank you.
Sure. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Menlo Park Planning Commission. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to comment this evening. My name is Carl Gish. I'm a resident of Palo Alto, have lived in Menlo Park, but I'm also co-CEO of a company that builds single-family homes in Menlo Park and other parts of San Mateo and Santa Clara Counties. What's different about Era Homes is that we build off-site, and we build carbon-negative homes. We have partnered with a world-class architect, Olsen Kundig. Some of you may be aware of them. And we're funded by Eric Schmidt's Venture Capital Firm. The goal is that we can, we're trying to, and so far succeeding, in demonstrating there's a faster, better way to replace end-of-life homes. We do single-family infill only. We can do the process of replacing a crappy old home full of asbestos and lead, and it's an environmental disaster, in 60 days to 90 days, once we have a permit. And these aren't ugly prefabs. They're designed by Olsen Kundig. They've been featured in Architectural Digest. And there's actually two already built in Menlo Park. And the reason I'm here before you is because what we're trying to do bucks a little bit just the reality of permitting in almost any town, at least in California. It's the longest time cycle, and our whole process is pulling a permit. Takes over 90 days. We can scrape the lot, recycle the home, build a new home, in less time. And the biggest issues for us right now are plan-check completeness and just revisions on the permitting process. And we're building essentially the same home over and over again. So what I'd like to do is be able to work with probably the planning department, but also the city council. I mean, what we're trying to do is demonstrate there's a better, faster way to build homes that are environmentally friendly and built to last. And so I don't know whether it's a follow-up meeting or continue to work with the planning department and the building department, but it's an area that I think everybody wins if we can build more homes more quickly. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
All right. At this time, I don't have any other comment cards. And looking at our online attendees, I see no hands raised. So if you'd like, we could wait a moment more or close the public comment, this is public comment period, if you'd like.
Yes, I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment portion of tonight's agenda and move to Section E, the consent calendar. Tonight, there are two items on the consent calendar, and I'd like to take public comment on this consent calendar. Mr. Pruder, could you please provide instructions regarding public comment on this agenda item and open the public comment period for the consent calendar?
Yes. Thank you again, Chair Eric. At this time, public comment for Item E1 and Item E2, consent calendar items. At the moment, I don't have any comment cards or hands raised, but members of the public in person in council chambers can provide me with a comment card on either Item E1 or E2, and you may speak. And also, again, as a reminder, please, for those on Zoom, press the hand icon, and for those calling, press *9, and you'll be able to get an opportunity to speak on these items. We can wait a little longer, if you'd like, and then close this public comment period, if preferred.
Okay. Seeing no other requests to comment, I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment period for the consent calendar. I am going to request that we poll Item E1 on the consent calendar. Would any of my fellow commissioners like to poll the other item?
Through the chair. Yeah. I think I would. I'm trying to look for the attendance, because since I was absent, and I recognize that there's a combination of other commissioners that might have been absent, that we may need people to vote on these minutes who may not have been in attendance. And so I just was checking on the date on the attendees for the July 14th. We might as well pull it, just so we just can have that discussion.
Okay. Great. So we will poll both of those items and move to commission discussion. For Item E1, which I polled, this was continued from our prior meeting on July 14th. The reason we continued it was related to a request that was made via email by Vice Chair Silverstein. As Vice Chair Silverstein is absent this evening, I would like to propose that we continue this item again for a time when he is present. Given the agenda for our next meeting, I don't think it's wise to put it on that agenda, so I am going to, I guess, request that a motion be made to continue this item to a date certain at our September 8th meeting, if that is amenable from my fellow commissioners.
I'm fine with that, as long as staff don't have any issues.
Yeah, that's fine, if that's the decision of the commission.
I'll make a motion to continue this item one more time for the September 8th meeting, so that Commissioner Silverstein can be here to participate in that discussion. Excuse me. I'm happy to second it, but I would just want to confirm with staff that the question that was asked in email and wasn't addressed before the meeting where this was discussed can be answered before September 8th. So the reason I think we want Commissioner Silverstein present is so that the question was posed and not answered can be addressed. Is that correct?
I'll go ahead and confirm that the question can be answered.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Then I'm happy to second.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Not seeing any other questions, I will call the vote on the motion to continue this item to our September 8th meeting. Commissioner Beruzzi.
Yes.
Commissioner Doe.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Schindler.
Yes.
Commissioner Sillen.
Yes.
I am also a yes. That is, six yes votes in favor, one absent. That motion passes. And we will now move on to Item E2 of the consent calendar. Commissioner Farrick, how are you feeling?
Well, just fine. But since I was gone, and I recognize that it looks like so was Commissioner Doe and Silverstein, that unless Commissioner Doe and/or I vote on this inabstention, we may or may not have, or I guess there's, no, I'm miscounting. There's enough. Okay. I'm good. If you all don't need to pull it, I have nothing further.
Okay. Seeing no other questions or comments from other commissioners, I will go ahead and call the vote on Item E2. Commissioner Beruzzi.
Yes.
Commissioner Doe.
Abstain.
Commissioner Farrick.
Abstain.
Commissioner Schindler.
Yes.
Commissioner Sillen.
Yes.
I am also a yes. That is, four yes votes, two abstain, and one absent. That motion passes. Thank you very much. We will now move to the public hearing part of our agenda. First up is Item F1. This agenda item is regarding a use permit at 1221 Windermere Avenue. At this public hearing, the commission may consider and adopt a resolution to approve a use permit to determine the floor area limit, or FAL, on a lot less than 5,000 square feet in area, and to remodel and construct first- and second-story additions to an existing non-conforming one-story, single-family residence on a substandard lot with regard to minimum lot width, depth, and area in the R1U or Single Family Urban Residential Zoning District, and determine this action is categorically exempt under SEQA Guideline, Section 15301's Class 1 exemption for existing facilities. The proposal would exceed 50% of the replacement value in a 12-month period and requires use permit approval. The proposal would also exceed 50% of the existing floor area and is considered equivalent to a new structure. Of note, this item was continued from the July 14th, 2025, meeting. Mr. Pruder, I believe you are the project planner on this item. Are there any additional updates to the staff report?
Thank you, Chair Eric. Again, Matt Pruder, Associate Planner. At this time, we don't have any specific updates for the staff report or project, but I'd like to just let the members of the public and the commission know that the family representing the property ownership is in attendance today, as well as the architect for the project, who is virtual. And they would like to share some opening remarks, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have before we have them come up and begin to speak. Thank you.
I think that's moved to that presentation, so if Mr. McLean or the property owners want to go ahead, that would be great.
I'm happy to, I'm the architect, Rex McLean, and we've been working on this for a while with the family. And basically, what they're doing is trying to expand their house to include more bedrooms for their family, which the house is a little bit undersized for what they currently have. And we've been working to make the massing of that structure fit in with the existing community, working with Matthew for a while, and trying to keep the massing lower and so it isn't so imposing, especially on the side yard lines. And I think, working with Matthew and the other guidelines, we've been pretty successful with that. So that's my only comment. I don't know if Tammy is available for any, the homeowner, Tammy.
If I may through the chair. Tammy, the property owner, would not like to speak, but again, happy to answer any questions. And so I think that concludes their remarks. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. McLean and Mr. Pruder. Before we move to public comment on this item, do any commissioners have any clarifying questions for staff or for the applicant? Okay. In that case, Mr. Pruder, could you please provide instructions regarding public comment and start the comment period?
Thank you again. Once again, we're at public comment period, this time for Item F1. Any members of the public interested in speaking at the council chambers can provide me with the comment. the comment card from the back table. Also, anyone who would like to speak virtually via Zoom is welcome to press the hand icon or if by phone, please press star nine. I don't see any hands at this time raised or any comment cards for this item. So I'm happy if you'd like to wait a little longer or close public comment when you'd like. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, not seeing any requests to speak, I am going to go ahead and close the public comment period and move us into commission discussion and ultimately a motion regarding the use permit. Would any of my fellow commissioners like to begin that discussion? Commissioner Farrick.
Thank you. Yeah, I just appreciate a lot about this. I think it's a nice-looking home and the thoughtfulness about the height was really nice to see, too. You know, obviously, it could be higher, and it was thoughtful to, you know, ensure that there is less intrusion, given the smaller setbacks. And the setbacks are, you know, an artifact of existing condition, so I don't have any issues myself with supporting this, you know, in this situation due to the constraints of the lot, you know, what I see here. So I'm happy to support it.
Thank you. Commissioner Sillen.
Thank you. Through the chair, a question for the architect or applicant. I was just curious, I was unfamiliar with this rule that we have where in this zone properties with lot area less than 5,000 square feet have to get a use permit to establish the floor area limit. And I'm just wondering if that was something that was unexpected or something that made this less certain for the applicant? And you don't have to comment if you don't want to, but I just found that a kind of strange zoning rule that we have.
Did you want me, Rex McLean, to comment on that? Or is that for the planner?
That was for you, but if you don't have any comments, you don't have to.
Okay, sure. So when we first started looking at this, which has been a while, we, I mean, typically what you do is you go down and talk to the planner and everybody else about, okay, what are the limitations on this project? And immediately, we are, it was identified that it's a substandard lot and that we're going to have to go through a use permit process, mainly because it was not, what the floor area limit was, was not defined for this particular property size. It was like it was for a 5,000-square-foot lot, these are the guidelines. So basically, what, one of the goals was to, you know, determine what was an appropriate floor area limit for a substandard lot. And then also, obviously, in doing that, establish what that structure would actually look like. So does that, does that answer the question?
My question is more about just whether that's something you've encountered with other projects and whether that specific requirement was sort of hesitancy, led to any hesitancy as to whether this project would get approved or not.
Sure, it was, I mean, okay, to answer your first question, I mean, I do work all over the place. And I think it's not uncommon to run into this, particularly in older neighborhoods where the newer planning guidelines weren't in place when it was established. And so it's hard for them to, for you to immediately apply all the new standards to that. So it's not uncommon to have something like this happen. As to whether it was, you know, foreboding or, you know, would have put the homeowners off to move ahead. As I said, I run into this kind of thing all the time, so it's a process, right? I mean, initially, somebody will tell you, oh, no, you can't do that, or it's going to be difficult to do that. And then you proceed and continue to work with the planner, and eventually you find a way to make things work. So I don't, I don't, I think that it was a little concerning, but, you know, right off the bat, we knew that there was going to be an issue with this, and they definitely wanted, the homeowners have had owned this house for a long, long time, and it wasn't like something that they're like, well, we're just going to move somewhere else. They definitely want, they had a, they really wanted to do this. So they were, they said, yeah, let's proceed. So there wasn't really anything to put them off. But, you know, if, should they have just bought the house a couple of years before that, and they're like, oh, you know, I think we'll just go find a new house, I could certainly see why somebody wouldn't want to make that kind of decision to move ahead. But anyway, I mean, and just to summarize, I run into this kind of thing all over the place where you're applying new planning regulations to properties that were not around at that time. So it's not uncommon. I hope that answered your question.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I know we're not a policy-setting body, so I just want to state my opinion that this, if I was a homeowner, I would find this kind of strange. And perhaps in the future, city council can make this a little more certain so that homeowners can know what is possible without having to, essentially, the code having to say that the planning commission gets to decide. That being said, I appreciate that staff mentioned kind of what the standard was for similar projects and larger lots, and this is well within those standards. So besides that, I'm happy to support the project. It seems like a good project and good to support families who want to stay in Menlo Park.
Commissioner Doe.
Thank you, Commissioner Sillen, for shedding light on that bit of background. And like Commissioner Sillen and Farrick, supportive, the purpose was to expand the home, and it, the drawings and the design clearly show that. It appears that the neighborhood outreach was done two years ago, so I'm sure the homeowners are eager to move ahead. So I'm happy to make a motion to approve as recommended by staff.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And I am not seeing any other commission comments, so I will go ahead and call the vote. One moment, please. Commissioner Beruzzi.
Yes.
Commissioner Doe.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Schindler.
Yes.
Commissioner Sillen.
Yes.
I am also a yes, that is six votes in favor with one absent. That motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay, we will now move on to item F2 of our agenda. This item is regarding a use permit revision at 217 Marmona Drive. At this hearing, the commission may consider and adopt a resolution to approve a use permit revision to remodel and expand an existing two-story, non-conforming, single-family home on a substandard lot in the R1U Single Family Urban Residential Zoning District. Determine this action is categorically exempt under SEQA Guideline Section 15301's Class 1 exemption for existing facilities. The addition would be located on the second level at the rear of the existing top floor. The original use permit was granted in 2005. I believe the planner for this project is Mr. Rogers. And before I turn it over to him, I just want to note that I currently live within 500 feet of this residence. I am renting and do not believe any of the conditions for recusal under rentals apply to me, so I am going to participate in this item. Mr. Rogers, are there any additions or comments you'd like to make on the staff report?
Thank you, Chair Eric and members of the Planning Commission. There are no staff changes or additions to the report. We are always available for questions. I would note that Manu Shmalta, the applicant and designer, is in the chambers this evening and able to make, is not planning to make a presentation, but is likewise available for questions, as is the homeowner.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. I have a note here that there would potentially be brief opening remarks. That is certainly not required, but I just want to make sure that the applicant can do so if they would like.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. I just want to add to you that it's about a 265 square feet addition, a small addition at second floor at the rear, kind of a center of the building, a home. The home is already two levels, as Roger said, and then we work with.
I'm just going to pause you right there. We're having a little bit of trouble hearing you. Maybe you can move closer to the microphone.
So.
Thank you.
Yes. So it's about the small addition, 265 square feet at the second floor. So that building is already two levels. So the addition is at the backside, centered, kind of. It's about 12 feet from the left property line and 17 feet from the right property line. So that's enough setback. So we're talking about that one. So I'm here, and the owner also, Dr. Everett, is also here. We're happy to answer your questions as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shmalta. Before we move to public comment, do any commissioners have any clarifying questions on this item, either for staff or for the applicant? Yes, Commissioner Schindler.
Thank you. Through the chair, I have a question, actually, for staff that is more generic than to the project. Is it today standard practice for building inspectors to confirm that construction conforms to the setbacks during the construction process and prior to the final inspection? There's a mention in the staff report that this didn't happen in 2005. So I'm just seeking to expand my own understanding of whether this happens today, 20 years later.
Yes, I do believe that the Building Division procedures are better than they were at the time of this original project. As I understand it, the building inspectors require that a surveyor provide a letter confirming that the forms for the foundation are in the right place. And so we don't wait until the end of construction until somebody, they put the building in the wrong place. We require it before the concrete or other, you know, permanent elements, the foundation go in. It is done, again, by a surveyor contracted by the applicant, but in line with surveyor requirements. And so I believe that this type of thing would be much less likely to occur during the current day.
Thank you for clarifying and giving us that background context.
Okay, I don't see any other further clarifying questions from commissioners, in which case, Mr. Pruder, could you please provide instructions regarding public comment and start the comment period on item F2?
Yes, thank you, Chair Eric. Again, we're on item F2 now for public comment. We have currently two comment cards that I've been given. But for those in the council chambers who'd like to speak and have not given me a card, please feel free to do so, and you'll be able to speak on this item as well. And again, for those who are virtually attending via Zoom, please press the hand icon to indicate your desire to speak on this item. And similarly, for those on the phone, star nine will need to be pressed in order to be able to speak. So this time, I'll start the first public commenter. I apologize for the pronunciation, but we have John, is it Friedus? Friedus? You're welcome to come speak. Sorry, the public commenter will be on their way. And I'm going to start the timer for you, but feel free to go to the podium now, and you'll have three minutes. Let me just first get the timer on, and we can then begin accordingly. All right, you're free to start. Thank you.
Okay, hi. My name is John Feldis. I'm the neighbor at 221, just to the side. So our concern is that we have a second-story picture window that overlooks the back, that looks over the roof of the back of the house. And this addition looks like it will pretty much block the light and the sky and everything coming into that window. And it's the only, the only large window, the only window on the second story and the only window we really have for light. We were there when the original 2005 construction went in, and we did accept that design in part because it didn't block our light coming in from the back. So this change, I don't object to him doing work on his house, but it does block our light, and it is a concern for us. We prefer not to have a design that goes all the way to the back and blocks basically all of the sky light coming in. So I don't know the procedure from there, but that's, that's my concern as the neighbor.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you for that comment. And our second public commenter by card is Slona Wallace. Sorry, did I get that right? Slona? Oh, I'm sorry. Gloria Wallace, oh my gosh, I'm so sorry. Thank you very much. You can begin when you're ready. Feel free to adjust the microphone, of course, and you'll have three minutes as well. Thank you.
All right, I am Gloria Wallace. I live to the, sort of south of Steve's house. And our only concern is because of the window, it'll look in our backyard, and we just want privacy. So the neighbor on the other side of Steve, you know, we're in the middle, the other side, they had to put in privacy windows for their neighbor because they were going to look in. You know, we're getting kind of, there's another house on Robin Way that also looks directly into our backyard. They were able to get under the builder's remedy law, and they put all the windows in the back. So we just like to retain as much privacy as we can. Other than that, we're happy with our addition. They're great neighbors, and we wish them the best on everything. But just privacy. That's it.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you. I'll just stop the timer here. And I don't see any other comment requests at this time. No hands raised, no additional comment cards. If you'd like, we could end the public comment period or wait a little longer. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, I think folks have had enough time given the other public comments, so I'm going to go ahead and close public comment on item F2 and move us into commission discussion and ultimately a motion regarding the use permit revision. Would any of my fellow commissioners like to begin that discussion? Commissioner Beruzzi.
I just want to confirm, I think I read in the staff report that the last public commenter's request had been accommodated in the design. Is that correct? That there, the design had been changed?
The window's going to have a privacy glass.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure that we had that information.
Yeah, we have already in the plans. So Roger can confirm that if he.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, sorry, I didn't want to jump in. So the neighbor on the left side, I tend to go with when I'm talking about a project, right versus left. The property on the left side did reach agreement with the applicant regarding privacy glass, and that is specified on the plans. On sheet A4, you can see the window, W04, has privacy glass noted. So if that's the individual who was commenting, that is on the plans and incorporated and something that will be enforced through staff on the building permit.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers.
I'm sorry.
Commissioner Doe.
Just with the left and the right, I know my left and my right, but I, so I was understanding left-side neighbor is 213 Marmona Drive, and that neighbor had requested the obscured glass, and that had been incorporated in the design. And I just wanted to, I don't know if it's okay to ask, confirm the public commenter is that 213 Marmona Drive? I'm sorry. Okay. Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Sorry. Just for the record, I'm going to note it was confirmed that that public commenter was 213 Marmona Drive. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Seeing no other comments or questions, would any commissioner like to make a motion on this item or add additional discussion? Commissioner Schindler.
Hi, I am prepared to make a motion to approve the use permit as recommended by staff.
Commissioner Sillen.
I would just quickly, very quickly, wanted to comment that I appreciate the 3D models included in this particular set of drawings, especially given all the items on the agenda today. It just made it easy to kind of visualize what was happening and see what's going on. So thank you for that, and I would like to second the motion.
Okay, I am going to go ahead and call the vote. Oh, sorry, you have, yes, Commissioner Farrick.
I didn't know I had to also raise my hand.
Please go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to make some comments. One, I, I feel for the comments and concerns about privacy. The neighborhood I live in has much shorter lots and so, you know, and we have houses that grew up around us and we lost our kind of privacy in the backyard and it was lamentable, but it is the zoning code. And so it, it is, it is what it is in some ways. And it sounds like this neighbor has been particularly gracious to try to do, you know, like there's very few windows on this extension and the setbacks are very generous. They could be 20 feet from the back rear property line, but they're only, they're 30 feet. So there's actually going to be, you know, substantial setback in the rear. The, you know, I, so I guess, you know, while I certainly have that empathy, I experienced it too. It is part of the zoning code and so I, there's not really a justification not to allow this to move forward. It does look nice, it's very thoughtful. You know, I, I prefer clear glass in my homes and so I appreciate that you went so far as to accept some obscured glass when I know that's not typically optimal. So, you know, that's, I just wanted to express that because I will support it, but I certainly have empathy for the changes and more density and larger structures going in around us.
Yes.
Commissioner Doe.
I'm sorry, really, just really quickly to Commissioner Farrick's point, I think you're also, you were referring to the, the other public commenter. I, I wish that there was a way where, I think this is what you were talking about. I'm not trying, I'm not sure if you're talking about like obscured glass or the loss of a, of a view of the sky. And I wish there were a, a, as easy, you know, you can swap out obscure glass for clear glass, but with the loss of view of the sky, you know, you can't replace the walls and the roof with something that would allow the view of the sky. So just to the other public commenters, we heard you and, and yes, like Commissioner Farrick said, it's a, and the, the zoning allows this. So I don't know if that was scrambled up, but I was just trying to acknowledge our, the other public comment and concern that was made. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Doe. Okay, seeing no other public, or sorry, seeing no other comments from commissioners, I am going to head, go ahead and call the votes on item F2. Commissioner Beruzzi.
Yes.
Commissioner Doe.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Schindler.
Yes.
Commissioner Sillen.
Yes.
I am also a yes, so that is six yes votes with one absent. That motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay, we are now going to move to item F3, which is regarding a use permit at 1611 Oakdale Drive. At this public hearing, the commission may consider and adopt a resolution to approve a use permit to demolish an existing single-story residence and construct a new two-story residence on a substandard lot with regard to lot width in the R1U Single Family Urban Residential Zoning District. The project would include excavation in the corner side setback along Oakdale Drive for a light well associated with the basement. Determine this action is categorically exempt under Sequel Guidelines Section 15303 Class 3 exemption for new construction or conversion of small structures. This project includes an attached accessory dwelling unit or ADU, which is a permitted use and not subject to discretionary review. And before I turn it over to the project planner, I believe Commissioner Schindler wanted to say a quick word.
Thank you. I would like to disclose that my home is located just under 1,000 feet from the property in question, but I do not, I think accordance, in accordance with the, the guidelines, this does not represent a significant conflict of interest for me, so I will be participating in this component of our agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Schindler. I believe the planner for this project is Mr. Jacob Garcia. Mr. Garcia, are there any additional comments or changes that staff would like to discuss regarding the staff report?
Thank you, Chair Eric, and hello, planning commissioners. I'm Jacob Garcia, consulting planner for the project, and there are no updates to the staff report. Are corrections to be made at this time? And I should also state that the applicant is available, the applicant and owner, Vinod Madabushi, is available to answer any questions as a staff.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcia. I have a note that Mr. Madabushi might want to make some brief opening remarks. Again, that's not required, but if you would like to do so, you may at this time. In that case, before we move to public comment on this item, do any commissioners have any clarifying questions for staff or for the applicant? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Pruder, could you please provide instructions regarding public comment and start the comment period?
Thank you again, Chair Eric. As a reminder, this is item F3, and so we are now in public comment period. Members of the public in the council chambers may provide me with a comment card and anyone on Zoom may feel free to raise their hand to indicate a desire to speak. And those on the phone can press star nine to indicate their desire to speak. And at the moment, I see no comment cards or hands raised. We can wait a short moment longer before closing this public comment period if you'd like. Thank you.
Okay, assuming there are no other requests to speak, I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment period for item F3 and move us once again into commission discussion and ultimately a motion regarding the use permit.
I guess the only thing I'll say is that I'm always a little unnerved when I see so many trees being taken out, but I note that a lot of them are small and non-heritage trees and I, you know, imagine there will be mature landscaping that evolves at some But just being a tree city, as evidenced by our logo, couldn't quite let that one go.
Commissioner Doe.
To, to Commissioner Beruzzi, I think, point, I think we all love trees and I'm glad you do, but I, I was looking at the list as well and a lot of them are these pitosporums. And we rent our home, but these little pitosporums kind of just like drop their fruits and then just kind of sprout all over the place. So when I saw that what was being removed was not the coast live oak, but these little, little thingies that just pop up that appeased my concern over the, the number of trees removed. And the staff were to say that they are really kind of shrubby rather than trees. Thank you.
I am always impressed at the arboreal expertise of our planning commission as well as our staff. Commissioner Sillen.
Yeah, I just wanted to quickly say that this home is on, in proximity to bike paths that I often travel with my kids, so I'm familiar with the property. And I think this project, the project being proposed fits that area fine. I noticed that there was a neighbor in support and no concerns for neighbors. I noticed that it meets all of our zoning requirements. It's besides being a substandard lot. And therefore, I think this is a, a good project for Menlo Park, and I would like to make a motion pending other comments from other planning commissioners to approve the project as proposed in the staff report.
Commissioner Schindler.
I support everything that Commissioner Sillen was saying. I do think it's a, a good fit for the neighborhood. I appreciate the consideration in the paperwork that was submitted and appreciate the thorough process with neighbor engagement. And I'm prepared to offer a second to the motion.
Commissioner Farrick.
Thanks, just a quick comment. It feels kind of the end of an era, miss, you know, the, the style of the home that's going down. Slight emotional pull, but I, of course, am supportive too. There's no, you know, I always look at the data table attachments, see, it's my favorite table of any project, I think, and appreciate that this new project actually brings it into setback conformance. Generous setbacks, you know, given the structure that's going in is significant and a second, you know, an ADU that adds a housing unit and it looks like a real functional living unit for, for the, you know, for our housing goals. So I, I'm supportive, though I do have this like strange soft spot in my heart for those low slung mid-century homes, but take lots of pictures, frame it, put it on the wall.
Thank you, Commissioner Farrick. Seeing no other comments, I'm going to head and I'm going to call the vote on the motion, which has been seconded. Commissioner Beruzzi.
Yes.
Commissioner Doe.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Schindler.
Yes.
Commissioner Sillen.
Yes.
I am also a yes, so that is six yes votes in favor with one absent. Item F3 passes. Thank you very much. We will now move on to item F4, which is regarding a use permit at 1008 Sevier Avenue. At this public hearing, the commission may consider and adopt a resolution to approve a use permit to demolish an existing non-conforming single-story residence and construct a new two-story single-family residence on a substandard lot with regard to minimum lot width and area in the R1U Single Family Urban Residential Zoning District. Determine this action is categorically exempt under Sequel Guidelines Section 15303's Class 3 exemption for new construction or conversion of small structures. The project planner for this item, I believe, is Mr. Turner. Mr. Turner, are there any updates to the staff report?
Good evening, Chair Eric and commissioners. I do not have any updates to the staff report. The applicant is here and I believe would like to make some comments. Otherwise, I am open for questions.
Okay, I believe the applicant is Ms. Girard. Mr., yes, please come forward. Thank you. Sorry, we can't quite hear you yet. Let's make sure the microphone is on.
Nice to meet you. Diana Girard. So this is a single-family residence as, oh, can I speak? Yeah, single-family residence, we're demolishing the old house and our, my clients are building a new house for more bedrooms and so they can enjoy it with their family. And it's conforming with setbacks and height and we tried to design it like their dream house. Yeah.
Thank you very much. We'll let you know if we have.
Okay.
Okay, before we move to public comment on this item, do any commissioners have any clarifying questions for staff or for the applicant? Okay, seeing none. Oh, yes, Commissioner Sillen.
Sorry. I was wondering about the daylight plane drawing. I guess, I'm not sure if this is for the, this is probably for staff. On page 11, or I should say, drawing A0.3, there's these daylight plane compliance diagrams. I'm not super familiar with these, but my, I'm just wondering why in some of the images it looks like there's stuff kind of sticking out past the red boxes that to me would seem to affect the daylight plane, but I'm just wondering if I could, if someone could educate me on that.
That'd be a question for me. So when we talk about the daylight plane, we're really only talking about the 45-degree angle. Anything below that is just the setback. So this would be, in this case, the side setback where eaves are allowed to encroach into that setback a certain amount, depending on the size of the required setback. In this case, it's a five-foot required setback, so eaves are allowed to encroach up to 18 inches. So this is allowable if these eaves were in that sloped portion of the daylight plane, that would not be allowable. But this shows a compliant house.
Okay, thank you. That answers my question.
Okay, seeing no further clarifying questions, I'm going to turn to Mr. Pruder. Mr. Pruder, could you please provide instructions regarding public comment and start the comment period for item F4?
Thank you, Chair Eric. This is item F4, and at this time for public comment, members of the public can provide me with a comment card if they are in person at the council chambers. And subsequently, any members of the public virtually attending via Zoom, as a reminder, you can press this hand icon. And those who are calling by phone can press star nine and we'll be sure to make opportunity for you to speak. At this time, I don't have any comment cards or hands raised. We can wait a little longer if you'd like before closing the public comment. Thank you.
Okay, it seems like we do not have any requests to speak, so I'm going to close the public comment period on item F4 and move us into commission discussion and ultimately a motion regarding the use permit. Would any of my fellow commissioners like to begin the discussion? Commissioner Beruzzi.
I think it looks nice. I'm supportive of the project. I have no questions and I'd be happy to make a motion, but I don't want to cut anybody else off.
Thank you. I concur that this is an attractive home. I enjoy the details in the 3D renderings and have no concerns about supporting the project as it confirms, conforms to everything that the city requires of it. And I'm prepared to second a motion, of course, open to additional commissioner discussions.
Commissioner Farrick.
Thanks, I would have done the same. And also, this is a difficult lot because it's so narrow and it's got a funny, you know, triangular kind of back portion. So really well done fitting a very beautiful-looking home into a lot that is also still getting the homeowner what they're hoping for, you know, a nice-sized home that also fits all these setback requirements. So well done.
Sorry, I actually hadn't turned my mic off for my last thing. I have no further comments.
In that case, I think we need a motion.
You got a motion and a second.
I did?
Yep.
Okay, well, okay, we have a motion and a second, in which case I will call the vote. Commissioner Beruzzi.
Yes.
Commissioner Doe.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Schindler.
Yes.
Commissioner Sillen.
Yes.
I am also a yes, so that is six votes in favor, one absent. The use permit for item F4 passes. That brings us to item F5 regarding a use permit at 1346 Hoover Street. I believe we are looking to continue this item for which we will need a motion. But before we get there, I think the project planner is Ms. Khan. Would Ms. Khan or anyone else from staff like to provide any updates regarding this item, which we're looking to continue?
Yeah, I don't believe there's any updates. I think it is helpful for the chair to open public comment just in case anyone came here to speak on the project.
In that case, Mr. Pruder, can you please provide instructions regarding public comment and start the comment period on item F5?
Yes, thank you, Chair Eric, for item F5, which is being continued. Is now the opportunity for public comment. Don't have any cards or hands raised, but as a reminder, please provide me with the comment card featured at the back table. If you'd like to speak in person, please also, if you're on Zoom, press the hand icon or if you're calling by phone, press star nine and we'll be sure to provide you an opportunity to speak on this item. I don't see any interest by Zoom with hands raised or comment cards, so we can wait a little longer or close when you feel. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to close the public comment period on item F5 and without being presumptive, ask if a fellow commissioner would make a motion to continue this and re-notice. So moved. We have a motion. Second and a second. I'm going. I'm going to go ahead and call the vote. Commissioner Beruzzi.
Yes.
Commissioner Doe.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Schindler.
Yes.
Commissioner Sillin.
Yes.
I am also a yes, so we will continue this item. Okay, that brings us to item F6 regarding a use permit at 2182 Clayton Drive. At this public hearing, the commission may consider and adopt a resolution to approve a use permit to construct first-floor exterior and interior modifications and a second-story addition to an existing non-conforming two-story residence in the R1S or Single Family Suburban Residential Zoning District. Determine this action is categorically exempt under Sequel Guidelines Section 15301's Class 1 exemption for existing facilities. The planner for this item is Mr. Chan. Mr. Chan, are there any updates from staff on this item?
Thank you, Chair Eric. There are no updates for the staff report at this time. Architect Fei Fei Feng is available for questions. Thank you.
Okay, in that case, before we move to public comment on this item, do any Commissioners have any clarifying questions for staff or the applicant? Seeing none, seeing one, I will call on Commissioner Sillin.
Sorry again, just have to look through my notes. Yeah, I'm wondering if there's any history regarding how this property got into such a non-conforming state in regards to setbacks.
There is no additional history that I can provide at this time.
Okay, thanks. And then I just wanted to double-check the, the street names. So on Google Maps, on the plans, there are different names. I know that Clayton is the street that connects to Alameda de las Polgus, but then the other street that's perpendicular that fronts the house, sorry, Clayton Drive, is that also Clayton Drive or is it a different street name?
Yes, thank you for the question. Staff also had a similar question early on when we looked through Google Maps, but in talking with the applicant, as well as looking at their survey, both sides are Clayton Drive. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. I don't have any other questions. Okay, in that case, Mr. Pruder, could you please provide instructions regarding public comment and start the comment period for item F6?
Thank you again, Chair Eric. This is item F6, public comment period. If any members of the public in the council chambers would like to provide the public comment, they may provide me with a comment card featured at the back table. Otherwise, those on Zoom and calling, once again, Zoom participants can press the hand icon, and those calling can press star nine on their keypad on their phone, and we'll be sure to provide you an opportunity to speak on this item. I do not see any hands raised and I do not have any comment cards for this particular item, so we could wait a moment longer or close when you feel ready to do so. Thank you, Chair.
Seeing no requests to speak, I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment period for item F6 and move us into commission discussion and ultimately a motion regarding the use permit. Commissioner Sillin.
Thank you. I'll just quickly comment that, I guess, similar to the item from, I think, two projects ago, this seems like a addition that's well within all the setbacks. And in addition to that, I appreciate the homeowner, homeowners addressing something that was unpermitted, that's within the setback. Therefore, I don't see any reason to not support this project, and I would like to make a motion to approve the project as per the staff report.
Commissioner Schindler.
I'm happy to support and second the motion. I also feel like the proposed project is attractive, reasonable, and meets all of the standards that the city has. I appreciate the question earlier about the history of the lot and perhaps how it got to the place that it is today. I feel like it's a reasonable guess that a corner lot where they are on the corner of a cul-de-sac has created some significant complexity, and I think that has been there for years, and I have no concerns about approving as, as proposed.
Commissioner Beruzzi.
I suspect that some of the funkiness might be due to the fact that, if, staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think this section of Menlo Park was annexed and then had been unincorporated. And so this is in that area where county might have had different setback rules or might have had less restrictions, fewer restrictions around what could be built or developed or how things evolved. I could be wrong, but that's my hypothesis.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I'm not seeing any other comments from Commissioners, and so I will call the vote on item F6. Commissioner Beruzzi.
Yes.
Commissioner Doe.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Schindler.
Yes.
Commissioner Sillin.
Yes.
I am also a yes, that is six votes in favor with one absent. That motion passes. Which brings us to item F7. Excuse me. Item F7 is regarding a use permit and architectural control at 115 El Camino Real. At this public hearing, the commission may consider and adopt a resolution to approve an architectural control revision to allow exterior facade modifications to an underconstruction mixed-use development consisting of two commercial spaces on the first floor and four residential units on the second and third floors in the SP-ECRD or El Camino Real Downtown Specific Plan Zoning District. The process, the project also includes a use permit request to allow massage therapy, a restricted personal service, as part of a wellness center in one of the commercial spaces. Determine this action is categorically exempt under Sequel Guidelines Section 15301's Class 1 exemption for existing facilities. I believe the planner for this item is Ms. Khan. Ms. Khan, does staff wish to provide any updates to the staff report?
Good evening, Chair, and fellow planning Commissioners and members of the public in attendance today. We do have the property owners, Mr. and Mrs. Panzoli, with us this evening at the council chambers, who will be doing a quick presentation. We do have the builders and the architect team online, should the Commissioner have any questions. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Sillin.
Thank you, Chair Eric. Before we start, I just wanted to disclose that my residence is within 500 to 1,000 feet of this property. Having reviewed the, you know, regulations, I believe I'm able to make an impartial decision in this case, so I will not be recusing myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sillin. Mr. and Mrs. Panzoli, welcome, and please go ahead.
I wanted to start by thanking all the Commissioners and Menlo Park Planning Department, the Building Department, all the guests and all the virtual people, my builder, my architect. Thanks for all their help and thanks for all of you to being here. You know, I love Menlo Park and we are doing, we are no big builders or developers, we just trying to do this, a simple, one-level retirement home for us. And the wellness center, it's my passion. I'm PhD in integral health and I like to provide wellness with the holistic, integrated, natural ways. And we all know massage is a big part of any healing and it's nothing to do with therapeutic massage. It's all Ayurvedic massage or pain-related massage, sleep-related massage, aromatherapy massage. So, and it is an integral part of any wellness center, so which is why we are requesting this. And then I, I use a lot of technology. Mine is a very customized approach for people, so it'll be a very unique, enhanced wellness center for the city. And I include my, my expertise, my client's input, and a lot of technology, which gives me a biocommunication and, of course, all the therapies that go with it. So back to the personal use, so it's been seven long years and it has been very long hardship. At 72, we never expected we're going to go through this to live in our choice of city, which is Menlo Park. So I made a layman version of just some of the slides. That's not the first slide. So it's just a layman version of just a visual effect on what we're trying to do. And it's, it's nothing, no major change. We're not hurting anybody, but we are enhancing. Our neighbor is very happy because they, they feel that it's more privacy for them. So, you know, we, we're not trying to hurt anybody or step on anybody's toes, but, but we really need to move back here. It's been seven long years. So this is the property. This is the outside look of it. And I think this information you already have. And these are just the visuals. These are, again, just a layman pictures that I took from the architectural drawing. And, you know, as you can see, there's not, not much change. We've kept, we've kept the visuals. So these are the three frontage. And this is about wellness center with, with, which I already discussed. So we are keeping the same color appeal, modern look, more practical and safer, more privacy than the approved plan. Proposed design maintains approved character, enhancements for community benefit, and the visual improvements align with downtown aesthetics. And then it supports the housing availability, adds professional holistic health services for residents, boosts local economy. It's eco-friendly, all green, and we were made to do 100% electric, so it's 100% electric. And it enhances the downtown visual appeal by replacing the old hotel, which was considered an eyesore by a lot of neighbor.